Good evening. I would like to call to order the December 7, 2022 regular school committee meeting at 5:30 p.m. At this time, I will entertain a motion to convene in executive session, a non-public session, to discuss approval of the November 16, 2022 executive session minutes and the collective bargaining pertaining to the TTA teachers. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Motion from Mr. Russo. Second from Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. Mr. Parsons had a vote.
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. School committee will reconvene in open session after the executive session in the Christine McGrath Performing Arts Center. Please join us for recognition of the 2022 Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients and the 2022 MCAS Student Achievement Awards. Thank you.
Welcome back to our open session, business portion of our meeting tonight. We are convened in LG1 in TMHS for the remainder of tonight. We just had the opportunity to celebrate and recognize our 2022 Tuxbury Memorial High School MCAS Student Achievement Awards and then also the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Recipients in the Christine McGrath Performing Arts Center. So that was a nice recognition. I want to mention that that was recorded and will be shown on Tuxbury TV later on if anybody's interested. So some point of business, the October 12, 2022 executive session minutes were voted on and approved in executive session. The December 7, 2022 regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 or on youtube.com/tuxburytv. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting at this time. I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify themselves. Seeing nobody indicating in the audience, I'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could all rise and Rania, if you wouldn't mind leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And then, Rania, I will move to you for our student update.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So today I have a few updates about some of the happenings in our school, but since the last meeting, I feel that not too many incredibly significant things have happened. So I have a big update on something that's going on both today and tomorrow known as Challenge Day. But to begin, I'm going to start with some sports updates. So the winter sports season has started up in full throttle. Several sports have already had their full games and some sports are even having their first meet soon. For instance, the track team's first meet is on Sunday, December 11 at the New Balance Indoor Track. Some club updates I have include NHS had a very successful volleyball tournament on Monday, November 21st. Along with this, on November 21st as well, auditions for the winter show, A Great Night for Singing, were also then. And performers have been working very hard at their rehearsals every day after school. International Club will be having their Jingle Bell Run, which will entail volunteers handing out water to the runners on this Sunday, December 11th. So just some miscellaneous things I have are the PSAT scores were released on Tuesday, December 6, which was yesterday, and they can be viewed by checking the student's college board account. So the last point that I would like to hit is Challenge Day. So today, I was very lucky to experience this. And for those who don't know, Challenge Day is basically a program which strives to build connections and empathetic relationships by allowing students to be more vulnerable and talk about their feelings, what's happening in their lives, what hardships they've been through and all that. All 10th graders will be participating in Challenge Day and students with the last names A through K participated today and L through Z will be participating tomorrow. Personally, this was definitely one of the most eye-opening events that I've witnessed at school. It was really amazing to hear people share their stories and it really helped me understand that everyone is going through something, whether it may be visible or not. Just the atmosphere that was surrounding everyone, it was so touching to see even the people who I thought wouldn't be going through things and would never open up, it was really touching to see them open up and become emotional to others and show their vulnerable sides. So I think that Challenge Day was really worth it and it's something that we should definitely have again. But that's all I have for today and I hope everyone has a good winter break. Thank you.
Thank you, Rania. Does anybody have any comments?
No.
No. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then, we move on to our first presentation and this is with Mr. Jason Stamp, our director of staff.
Okay, Madam Chair, as Mr. Stamp is setting up, I just want to remind the committee, you know, due to a series of some human errors that occurred last spring of 2022, I sought out to do an audit of our Tuxbury Public Schools procedures around protecting confidential data. I directed Mr. Stamp to search for an auditor or a consultant to do this work and through members of the committee. You shared with us a recommendation and we went with that recommendation. So what you have in front of you is not only the report that came from that audit and Mr. Stamp is going to summarize the highlights and recommendations of that report. Jason?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. And like Superintendent Regan just said, I'll be reporting a summary of the recent audit of our data systems and our protocols. This is the most, this most recent audit was conducted at the behest of the superintendent of schools with the specific purpose to check how we are protecting student data and to see if there's more we can do.
There we go.
Got it, got it.
Who protected? The audit, as Superintendent Regan stated, was conducted by Steve Smith. Steve's bio is on page three of the audit, so I won't go through all of his qualifications, but I did want to mention that he has done, he has done these audits all over the country. In the audit follow-up for ours, in the meeting that we had with him, he stated that we are far above where a great many districts are with regard to student data privacy. And some of the other quotes that he mentioned to us, and some of these are in the audit, is that we're above average district when it comes to protecting the privacy of students. He mentioned that it is apparent that we have put in many resources towards building an effective privacy program. And he also mentioned that the weakest link in any privacy program is unintentional actions of people. Tonight I will talk about the process that Steve used. I will summarize the audit's findings and I'll describe what our next steps will be. So before I begin, I wanted to highlight a few terms I'll be mentioning throughout this presentation. Acronyms typically elude me, so if I were in the audience, I would appreciate this slide, so I included it. So FERPA. FERPA is a federal law that protects the privacy of student education records. A DPA is an agreement between the school district and the vendor. It makes a vendor a "school official," quote unquote "school official," and it gives the district ownership and control of student data. It defines how a vendor may or may not, and may not use student data. It prevents targeted advertising to students. It gives the district the right to audit the vendor and it supersedes the vendor's terms of service and privacy policy. SDPC, the Student Data Privacy Consortium, is a unique collaborative of school districts and state agencies that pool resource to create a catalog of DPAs. So DPAs are legal documents. If we were to hire a lawyer to produce a DPA for us for every resource, it would cost an exorbitant amount of money. So this SDPC is collaboration, this consortium, all the districts pay a small nominal fee to be a member and then that consortium pays for the DPAs and we all share exhibits of those DPAs. It's very cost-effective. So the process. The process Steve used was very typical. He collected data, he analyzed it, and then he made some recommendations for improvement. To collect his data, he conducted interviews with administrators, coaches, To collect his data, he conducted interviews with administrators, coaches, IT staff, secretaries, and a subset of our teachers. He took a look at our district's awareness of student data privacy regulations, our policies and our procedures with regards to student data, and what technologies we have in place to protect our student data privacy. So our current state. In his executive summary, Steve states that, quote-unquote, "slight improvements in all three aspects of a privacy program can move Tewksbury Public Schools from being an above-average district to an exemplary district when it comes to protecting student, the privacy of students." So I wanted to say that our current state is great, and I realize that's a rhyme and it sounded kind of corny, so our current state is awesome. I, I do want to say, I've been in the last, you know, trying to think how many years back, maybe two or three years now, I've been working hard in this area, so this was kind of nice for me. It was like, it's like getting your test back and seeing how you did, you know? So it's sort of nice. So one of the main reasons that we've done so well is the fact that we've been a member of the SDPC since the fall of 2020. Remote learning brought about an influx of new digital resources and a greater challenge to protect student data. We realized very quickly that our previous software installation procedure would not suffice. This change led us to a greater awareness of student data privacy. We revised our procedures, we notified stakeholders, and we have used SDPC to vet our resources ever since. I did want to mention some quotes Steve, Steve said about our current state. Overall, the district has an above-average awareness of the student privacy issues. All, quote-unquote, "all staff, all the staff that were interviewed demonstrated an understanding of the role with respect to student data privacy, 100%." As of the writing of this report, this is, quote-unquote, "TPS has vetted 674 applications." That's a pretty large number, actually. I was surprised by that number. Quote-unquote, "TPS has established a fairly robust process and awareness campaign around the importance of only using vetted and approved applications. Training on the process is provided, along with a video explaining the importance of and implementation of the process." So now to the good stuff. So that was our current state. These are the recommendations. So what can we do better? So I broke this slide out into four categories. His process looked at those three, you know, big categories, but when he wrote his recommendations, he broke up procedures and policies in two parts, so that's why I broke it out into four on this slide. Under the category of awareness, it was recommended that we increase the frequency in which we provide information to staff. So they say less is more, but in this case, more is more. It was also suggested that we consider taking advantage of some of the external resources such as COSA entrusted learning environment seal program, which I had never heard of until we met with him, so I was glad he mentioned it. This is a district privacy framework that can be leveraged to improve all aspects of a district's privacy program. That would be something I enroll in, and at the end, we would get a certification that we are an exemplary, exemplary district with regards to student data privacy. Another is Future of Privacy Forum Student Privacy Train-to-Trainer Program. Actually have the two tech coaches that we have in the district already enrolled. They've already registered to enroll for this program. He mentions that having staff participate in this program will help deepen the in-house knowledge of student data privacy issues. For procedures, there are a few procedures that can be adjusted to improve what is in place. It is recommended that the current parent consent form we use when a resource does not have a DPA with the district, is recommended that we revise that. So what, basically what happens is if we have, if we're trying to use a resource, say Boom Cards, and we don't have a DPA with the company Boom Cards, then the teacher technically can't use that with their students. Their students can't log into Boom Cards, would be against policy, right? Would break FERPA. However, if you have the parent's permission, then yes, you can, but you need parent permission, you need parent consent. So we have a template form that we would send home, give the parent, the teachers, and they send it home. So Steve looked at our consent form, he said, "Yeah, it looks great, except you left out a little, a little piece that's sort of a new part that, when we, when we, we adopted the form that SDPC gave us, say, two years ago, and they've revised it since." So there's a piece now that says, "If the parent doesn't consent, then what is the alternative other than using this piece of software?" So it could be, you know, some worksheets, or it could be, you know, this book or that, or maybe a different, you know, piece of software that, that has a DPA. So we're going to update our form. Let's see. It is recommended, again, under procedures, recommended that we update our AUP to include the following: a clear distinction in the use of Gmail to convey sensitive data internally to the tewksbury.k12 MA.us domain versus externally. So mentioning in the DPA, what's the difference? I mean, sorry, not in the DPA, in the AUP. Lot of acronyms, see? To remove the guidance to include student ID numbers and emails. So in our AUP, we do have a mention of that, and that goes back to when we first brought in Google Apps for Education, and we were trying to teach people how you would log into Google, and that is still there, so we need to remove that. That's not helpful to have there. Three, include the content filtering and surveillance language. We have some language in there, but we need to be a little bit more specific about, the students really don't have much right to privacy when it comes to using our technology, so we have to make that a little bit more clear. It was recommended that a section of the district's website be devoted to student, student privacy. So Steve, Steve states in the audit, and I quote, "TPS has a lot to be proud of with respect to student data privacy, and conveying this to this entire school community may alleviate some fears." So my plan is to create a little section on the public website and sort of list all the things that we are doing, have a list of all of our resources that have current DPAs in place, and he has a list, it's in the audit document, a list of things I'll Under the category of policies, it was recommended that we immediately implement an annual notification of rights under FERPA. So currently, families of students on IEPs and 504s already get the annual notice. FERPA is noted in our AUP. However, moving forward, we want to make sure that all parents get the annual FERPA notice, and so we'll do that through including it within the student handbooks. So I think the plan will be, we'll include it now, and then we'll send a notification to parents that we've updated the student handbook to include FERPA and refer them to that, and then we've kind of hit it for this year. It was also recommended that we implement a website privacy policy. We're currently working with our web developer, web developer Sterling to get this done. Here's an example, let me click to this slide here. This is an example, so Lawrence Public Schools way at the bottom of their website, their public website, you can see it says "web privacy policy," and if you click on that, it just brings you to a page saying, "Yes, we're collecting cookies, and we're collecting this information from you," and we just have to state that that's happening. So the web developer will provide that to us, and we'll just link to it on our website. So I'm working with them already on that. Let's see. Oh, another recommendation under policies was to be more specific on our district's, district's student records policy. So we do have a policy, and it says something to the effect that student records will be handled, do you, yeah, I can't remember exactly.
The term in there is that staff will have access to student records as appropriate. We'd like to clarify as appropriate, deemed appropriate by the building principal or superintendent. Simple clarification that as appropriate was a little too vague.
Yes, thank you. Under the category of technology, so we received two recommendations here. These will cost some money, they'll take some time to implement, however, we've already begun looking into vendors that provide these services. So it's, one of them is to upgrade the district's communication and messaging system to an all, like an, like an all-in-one system that's a little bit more, I guess, it would alleviate some of the human error that might occur when sending emails. And then the second would be to implement a cloud data security system, sort of like a security wrapper. What this would do, one of the examples he gave was if you were to send an email that included, let's say, an IEP, and you didn't mean to include the IEP, it would alert you and say, "Hey, did you mean to include this IEP in your email?" You know, it would, it would do something like that. Or it might say, "Hey, you're sending a document that has social security numbers in it. Do you mean to actually send that? Because it's probably not a good idea." So it's just another layer. It won't stop the person from doing it, but it'll at least alert them to say, "Hey, this might be a mistake." Let's see. Okay. So, so now the work begins. So I put together a rough timeline to implement the recommendations that we've received. So as you can see, some of these items will be addressed immediately, so I have my little now area. We'll be joining those PLNs, those professional learning networks that I mentioned. We'll be updating the AUP immediately. We'll be updating our student handbooks immediately. We'll be, I'm already working with Sterling to update, update the website privacy policy for the rest of the school year. We'll be investigating technologies based on our recommendations, including privacy tips to staff. So again, more is more. So our tech coaches send out a Tech Tuesday, Tuesday tech tips, so they'll be throwing in there every week to the teachers, "Hey, don't forget," student, you know, whatever they have for student data privacy, keep reminding them. We'll be revising our procedures based on these recommendations in the AUP. Consider policy changes based on those recommendations, the one Brenda mentioned specifically. Update the district website to include that section, so I'll be starting to work on that. Shouldn't take too long, hopefully not till the end of the school year. Next school year, possibly implement new technologies, depending on cost and, and those types of things, and what we figure out and what we find out. Increase the frequency of privacy trainings throughout the school year. So that's a little bit trickier because we have to build it in, you know, one of the recommendations was build in privacy into all your PD, every single PD. So Lori's going to love that one. Every time we do a PD on, you know, reading, let's get some data privacy in there. But I'll push. Update student handbooks, we'll continue to do that. And then ongoing, improve awareness, consistent regular trainings with staff, continue our memberships, and then continue to review these policies, hopefully do another audit. I like doing, we do audits in the IT department. Every year, we do our Google audit, we do an audit of our domain and of our infrastructures. This could be another audit that we do either every year or every other year, depending if Dave, Dave got the money to do it. But this is a good one. This is a real good one to keep, keep tabs on. So, let's see. In conclusion, so just to summarize again, Steve thinks we're doing a pretty good job. I think we're doing a pretty good job. Again, we're an above-average district, and the big thing is, the weakest link is, is that unintentional actions by, by, you know, by people, and that's a hard one. So that's where it comes down to awareness and just keeping people aware. So that's kind of the big one for us. And that is it. So anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Parsons?
I have none, but that was very informative. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Mr. Russo?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First of all, thank you very much. I think we're very fortunate, honestly, to be in a district and hear some of those remarks, especially when, you know, it, to your point, Mr. Stamp, it takes one action, right? And that's what people focus on. And so to hear that, sure, those one actions, to your point, necessarily are never going to be unavoidable, per se, but the fact that we are putting, that we have precautions in place and that we have things in motion already, and some that maybe we'll implement down the road, is a good district, a good way, a good, good piece for our district. I guess some of the, a couple of things that I specifically had question on, so when someone, when someone is starting, and I know we've done a lot of new hires in the district over the last several months, you know, how quickly is some of that training really implemented? Because obviously, you know, day one, I mean, people are sending emails out, you're involved and entrenched in your work. So how quick, because I, just as a user of Google myself, I mean, it's, you know, you're sharing documents constantly, and so there's no real sort of, you know, to me, that, from my own personal experience, there's no real experience, way to sort of, if I share it with you, did I intend to share it with you or not, right? So how quickly do we do some of that?
Well, we train our staff multiple times. So first of all, on that day one, when we all go into those rotations of training, confidentiality and FERPA, train every single staff member that's hired and onboard that day at that PD, goes through that.
Okay.
And that's why, if you remember in our AIDS contract, that's the day we require our aides to be here, so then everybody, teachers, aides, staff, all go through that. We also have a mandated training and review in place that every staff member has to participate in by October 1st of every school year, which includes, again, the retraining of how to secure a document when you are sending it out, FERPA, confidentiality. All of that training has to be verified and signed off annually again. So we do the live, then we do the annual with a lot of things. There's other trainings on there as well, bloodborne pathogens and all kinds of mandated review of safety procedures, as well as, FERPA is a big one on there. And then we weave in the securing the Google documents again, and we made all of this digital so that it can be used if someone were to be hired mid-year. So it's, if they miss that first day of PD, it's digital now, and then what they're really doing too is accessing, who would I call when I have a question on that, is equally part of the training. This year, for athletics, we've used a new application for all of our coaches. We started with fall to onboard through a different process. We'll hope to use that digital process with all of our staff next year. But the training happens, when you think about that, if you are an employee that's here the start of the school year and all through, you will have received up to three trainings on the same information, and Steve's saying, you know, blast it on every PD, blast it again, not the full PD, but at least, those are mine, and then the coaching tips all throughout the year. More awareness, keeping it on the forefront of everybody's mind.
And then I guess, just lastly, is there any concern with any of these recommendations on security, just from a collective bargaining standpoint that we would need to be considering and thoughtful of, and just, and it's not even a question that has to be answered, you know, today, it's just something to, to just be mindful of, I guess.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Mrs. Beasley Smith? I too want to say thank you. This is a great report. I would recommend anyone who takes a look at the, the notes at the agenda to read Steve's full report, because I sat down and went through it, and it was so detailed, it was excellent. And it was, it was insightful, and it was important, I think, to see, given the heightened attention to some of the stuff we've talked about, and as someone who analyzes risk and does that for a living, I, I thought it was great. I did have a couple of questions, a couple that Mr. Russo already asked. So in terms of the encryption, if we're going to start using that with families, sometimes it can be kind of confusing on the receiving end of receiving an email with encryption. Is there something that will go out to parents and families ahead of time that would explain that to them, let them know that they're going to see something a little bit different?
Yeah, absolutely, and that's why I mentioned it wouldn't be something we would implement immediately, so we'd have to take some time to research. I basically look at some different options. Steve gave us a few companies to look at. We would have to sort of choose which one we would use if we do use one, and then contract with them, and then we'd have to onboard staff. It would be, we would be using both. I used, I always call it like the binky, the binky time or the binky year, where we have both in, in place so that we can kind of transition from one to another. And then we would need to, yeah, we would need to train families. The product that Steve sort of described was something that, you know, families engage with, that our staff would engage with, and sort of a whole community in all-in-one sort of bundle. So I don't see that as being an easy lift, but I think it would be worth it, so.
Okay, thank you. So I mentioned, when I was reading his report, there was a mention of unapproved apps that were being used by the, I think it was by the sports teams, maybe?
Yeah, there was, yeah, exactly.
I'm just wondering if you can speak to the content of the unapproved apps, and if it's something that parents are aware of, do they have, kids have to sign, do they have to sign off on them? Is it families or kids using those apps?
Yes. So essentially, what it is, is there's an app being used by the athletic program that doesn't have a current DPA in place. So that was just a matter of now speaking to the coaches and saying, "Listen, in order to use this app, if your students are using this app, that we have to either get a DPA in place, or we need to put in place the parent permission slip." So that's, yeah, so that's a conversation that has to get had, yeah.
If I might, one app that we rely on, it's part of a course that we teach here at the high schools, Adobe Photoshop. So it's right in the program of studies. If you will be taking this course, parents have to. There's no way to deliver an Adobe Photoshop course for our photography class without it, but Adobe just does not participate in the DPA process with schools. We have never had any issue with it, but parents, we now put it in the program that you need to know going into us that we don't have a DPA with them. Now, people may not even realize what that means. There's no other option, other than they'd be taking photos, and they're not going to be able to use the software that we have. So sometimes it's hard. The option that Steve recommended that we put in the consent sometimes won't exist. The option is, you know, you can't, you, you might not want to take that. sometimes won't exist. The option is, you know, you might not want to take that course.
That makes sense. Yeah, thank you. And then one more, and I just wanted to comment that I think it's great that you are looking to potentially put in a reoccurring internal self-audit of the recommendations and all. The last one I had was, was there any recommendations or feedback provided on what to do or how to handle a breach that does happen?
A breach that happens?
Yeah, if something goes out unintentionally, if something happens that we, you know, need to pull something back, was there any recommendations from him on how to handle that?
The, I think the quote was, once the toothpaste is out of the tube, something to that effect. The, one of the pieces of software that he recommended, though, he mentioned that you can pull, so if you sent an email, you can pull it back. You couldn't stop the person on the other end from making copies of that and sending it out. But our email, I don't know if you know this, but at the bottom of our email, if you read the little fine print, it says, if you receive this in error, please delete it right away because this is not for you. Doesn't say it exactly like that, but that's the point, right? But yeah, so trying to find pieces of software to help the human error is, that could be helpful. But I think the strongest, the strongest piece of this is the social engineering and just keeping it part of the culture of like, huge tab, you need to be careful. This is very important. You need to be careful. And if you talk to our staff, they're going to say, oh, yeah, to get a piece of software, so annoying. You have to fill out this form. It takes like 20 minutes. If it costs anything, I gotta go get a quote. You can't be a screenshot from your computer. It has to be the real quote. And there's this huge, long process they have to go through now. And it's amazing. It's awesome. It really, it really, it really keeps them on the straight now. And they all know about it. It's so annoying that they'll talk about it. And I'll hear, I'll be walking down the halls and I'll hear them grousing about it. I'm like, yes, they are aware. They are aware.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Sullivan?
Appreciate the report, obviously. And it's nice to be able to see the things that we're currently doing now that we didn't wait. Certainly that Steve pointed out, we should be doing. Just along those lines, Mrs. Regan, are we going to have to bring the handbooks back to us as the committee? Or is that something that we can just make that change and message out?
And we, that happens at times, right? That we have to make a change, whether it's an update to civil rights policy or law. And we can make updates and we certainly can bring those, the description of the update made rather than all the handbooks and to your attention when we do that.
Great. A nice segue because policy, I am on the subcommittee policy with Bridget. We've been doing a lot of work, as you can see by tonight's meeting. We certainly had to slow down with the new school. So, but we're looking to get back up in January. There is a policy listed on here, and my question is probably, it's not a question, but a comment to Mrs. Regan probably more. So we're going to reach out to you, obviously, and get the policies that were mentioned as part of this audit. We were taking them blocks at a time and it made sense when we did the financial ones to have Mr. Libby, business manager, would offer the same, that maybe it makes sense to have Mr. Stamp be part of those subcommittee conversations as we look at these policies moving forward to make sure that our policies are reflective and are an improvement of, you know, what Steve thinks will be a strengthened technology policy for us moving forward. So.
Will do.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Merry Christmas, Jason.
Yeah, you too.
And my only comment is, thank you for doing this work. I know it's a tricky time, but I really appreciate it. And I'm really excited to hear you be so excited about it. And like Mrs. Beatty Smith said, to have the intention going forward to revisit this, I think it's important. And I think I've gotten the vibe, I've gotten the feedback from, certainly the school committee thinks that this stuff is very important, but that administration does too, the teachers do, that you do. So I think that, you know, is very valuable, I think, moving forward. So that, and then also the embedding of data and safety in all PD, all areas, you know, as new things are unrolled, just being mindful of how student safety and data security is, you know, impacted by whether, whatever new thing comes along.
Students and staff, really. I mean, we protect our confidential data for personnel as well. So.
Yes.
And we pay really strict attention to that. Appreciate that.
So anyway, that, those are my comments. And thank you so much for this work.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And moving on, we have citizens forum, but I don't really see anybody here. So we can move on from that. And that brings us to the approval of minutes. If Mrs. Beatty Smith?
Okay, I would like to make a motion to the committee for the approval of the November 16th, 2022, regular school committee minutes as presented.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a second by Mr. Russo. And all in favor, please say aye.
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 And no opposed. So the.
I would just like to abstain for the record as I was absent, Mrs.?
Okay, so that would be.
Here, I mean.
The motion passes four to zero with one abstention by Mr. Sullivan. And now the submission and payment of bills. Mrs. Beatty Smith?
All right. I would like to move the school, the school department payroll for the period ending November 10th, 2022, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,621,117.79.
Okay, we have a motion from Mrs. Beatty Smith in a second.
I'll second.
By Mr. Sullivan. And to approve and certify the payroll period ending November 10th, 2022, in the total amount of $1,621,117.79. How do you vote, Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Beatty Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well for a five to zero unanimous vote.
Okay. I would like to move and motion the school department for payroll period ending in, on November 23rd, 2022, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,493,994.60.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan to approve and certify the payroll period ending November 23rd, 2022, total amount of $1,493,994.60. How do you vote, Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mrs. Beatty Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well for a five to zero unanimous vote. Now on to our staff reports. Mrs. Terry O'Regan, I'll start with you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two updates that are really exciting, and the first of which, I'm going to invite Mr. Ronald Druin, our athletic director, to come up to the podium and describe for you a true honor that we were presented with last week, where the NHL, the National Hockey League, reached out to Mr. Druin, Tewksbury High School Athletic Director, if we had interest in playing an exhibition game at Fenway Park called Frozen Fenway. I'm going to let Mr. Druin talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, that was, thank you. That was pretty nice. You know, last Monday, we got notified from the Bruins that they were interested in us playing a team out of New Jersey at Fenway Park. Game's going to be January 4th. Tuesday morning, the Bruins community service person kind of hooked us up with a high school called Northern Highlands in New Jersey. They're the Division II state champions out of New Jersey. So once they kind of lined up the two teams, our schedule was full. So I had to deal with the MIA a little bit as far as getting an additional game. So there's ways that you can, different ways you can get additional games. You can only play so many games a season, but there's ways to get an additional game. It's called an endowment game. So the game, because they have no power ranking in New Jersey, the game has no power ranking value for us as we're power ranked now in the MIA. So the game is an exhibition game. We have a two-hour block on January 4th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We're playing Northern Highlands, New Jersey. Again, they, the reason they chose us is they're the Division II state champs out of New Jersey. They wanted to play the Division II state champs out of Mass. It's a private game. We're private guests of the NHL for this game. The commissioner of the NHL has a grandchild, and they were looking to get him to play at Fenway, and they were looking for a competitive team to play their team at Fenway, which happened to be us. So on Wednesday, we were on a Zoom and they took us through the entire game and how the things, how it's going to work, you know, what color shirts you're going to wear, what time you can arrive, what locker room you're going to have. The thing for us is, it's a limited, it's a limited crowd, where each school's going to get a limited number of tickets, a small number of tickets, considering our fan base. I've worked with Mr. Libby and Superintendent Regan and Mr. Long and trying to figure out the best way to, you know, what's the right number to give to families of the players? What, you know, how are we going to go about messaging out about our tickets? Because all communication regarding this game, all of it, has to be approved by the NHL. Any tweets, any, anything like that has to be approved from the NHL. I got, we got to literally send it off. So we're in the process of trying to figure out how the tickets are going to come to us. My fingers are crossed that they're going to give me a stack of paper tickets with a barcode at the bottom. So it'll just be much easier than having everybody that wants to go get an MLB.com account and, you know, have to email out X number of tickets to everybody. It'd just be easier if they give us paper tickets. But the second day, last Tuesday, the Bruins hooked us up with Northern Highlands and they said to, you guys can kind of message out about the game. So we messaged out about the game. And about three hours later, the Red Sox called me and they're like, take that stuff down right away. I guess the Red Sox got bombed with inner-city schools around Boston of why a team from New Jersey was coming in and playing at Fenway and not Boston Latin High School or Brighton High School or whatever. So they were, they're real strict about how this game can be messaged out. So the game will be the 4th of January, 5 o'clock start. Our numbers of, you know, we have all the information about how many we can dress. It's the same as the state tournament, 22. As soon as we get more information on the tickets and how many we're going to get, I asked Northern Highlands if they thought they were going to use their full allotment or if they were going to come up the highway like Hoosiers in a caravan. And they thought they were going to come up in a caravan. So I'm hoping that we can get a bunch of Northern Highlands tickets, which will make it a little bit better for our community for access. But again, it's still a work in progress. There's supposed to be some messaging out by the end of the week through the NHL. And Northern Highlands has a media director that they're going to try to use in conjunction with the NHL. So I think we're in a pretty good place. I think we've come to some reasonable numbers for the families of the players. And then, you know, if they're paper tickets or electronic tickets, we can kind of message out through here, through the school department. And we have our Christmas tournament, the 26th, the 27th, the 28th, where the building will be open. And if at that point, you know, I'll be at the Christmas tournament all three nights and we can, you know, people can come into the lobby outside the gym and we could just sell tickets there for anybody who wants to go. It'll be a first come, first served basis because there's not. What I've seen us go to Gillette and I've seen us go to the Garden and I've seen us go to different, what I would call big-time high school sporting events, that number's not, not there for what we kind of, how we travel. That number's not there. So I'm a little concerned. I'm hoping I get a stack of Northern Highlands tickets and that would make things easier on the community. So, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Exciting.
No.
It is, it is exciting. It is exciting. Like I said, as soon as we know more, you guys will know more. But Mr. Libby's been great and as always. And, you know, Mrs. Regan and Ms. McDermott have been super supportive. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Yes, oh.
I just want to stress, and Mr. Druin will appreciate that I'm doing this, is that we will not be sending out any communication until we receive it from the NHL. We wanted you to know the date's coming. We wanted the preview a little bit. But all promotion of this event will come from us because it came from them. And then we'll, we'll get out the official, so that there is no confusion or people. And we'll, we'll make sure to get that out if we get it in the next district newsletter. And then again, as we enter into the break week, so that people know what time Mr. Druin or his team may be available for tickets.
One more quick thing. Next Wednesday, uh, next Thursday, I believe it's next Thursday. In the past, when girls hockey won the state championship and boys hockey won the state championship, we've had a luncheon for them during school. I think next Thursday will be the luncheon. So if anybody is not at work, working from home, whatever, and you want to come, you know, have lunch with the volleyball team, come have lunch. You know, we got plenty and we generally do it in here. And just, you know, a tribute for the kids. So if anybody's around next Thursday, everybody's welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. The second of my updates is maybe not as equally exciting, but certainly we're very proud to be the recipients of the Innovation Pathway Support Grant for $50,000. This is a grant, as you know, that's related to careers within high-demand industries while in school, engineering, technology careers. I just want to share with you from Dr. Bastieri, this grant is used to allow Tewksbury High School the ability to expand the UMass Engineering Exploratory Program to two weeks in the June of 2023. You saw that presented earlier this school year, to allow for the continuation of the marketing efforts of the Innovation Pathway Program to eighth grade freshman and sophomore classes. And then to support our early college classes, both at Middlesex Community College, and then future DE classes that we're in collaboration with at Southern New Hampshire University, we hope. So I want to thank Ms. Baker O'Brien and Ms. Bast, Dr. Bastieri, Principal Long, who's here, for continuing to just support and prioritize this type of applied learning for our students and the opportunities that brings us the funds to do so. I'm not going to say too much about Challenge Day because Rania did a beautiful job, but I do want to thank our high school administrative team for bringing this event. This was an annual event for some time. And then, of course, it was put on pause when, during the pandemic time. And it's nice that it's back. So a lovely day and certainly a way to foster belonging for all of our students, for the students that participate here at the high school. Next, the Wynn Middle School will be running a fall play. And the title of the play is, and I have to read this, Presenting Puffs or Seven Increasingly Eventful Years at a Certain School of Magic and Magic. So this play, which I'm told, is for all age levels. It's a family play, a Harry Potter spinoff type of play. And it has student and senior discounts for tickets. The play will be running December Friday and Saturday, December 16th and 17th in the evening, and then Sunday, December 18th at 2:00 p.m. So two evening shows and one afternoon show. And anybody seeking more information can contact the Wynn School. And finally, I'd like to just remind anybody who may be watching and members of the committee that December 22nd and 23rd will be early release days for our students and our staff will be participating in different types of professional development, including the getting ready to move all of their things over to the new school. And then January, then is the December break for the week. January 2nd is recognizing the New Year holiday. January 3rd and 4th, two additional days off for our students while our staff participate in two full professional development days. So we'll be sending out reminders of all of those dates and schedules in our district newsletter next week.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Just one. Thanks, Mrs. Regan. Just with the grant, are there any obligations or requirements from the district perspective as it relates to receiving that grant or anything that we are on the hook for as it relates to?
Really that the money supports our students and part of that Innovation Pathway program.
Okay.
So that there, whatever we need to make sure that happens.
Okay.
And sometimes it's that summer programming or providing more courses that lead to that pathway.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm looking forward to the play myself. It looks exciting. And Mrs. McDermott?
Yes, thank you. Many of our schools have been collecting donations for the food pantry. The Ryan School had a successful collection prior to Thanksgiving. And TMHS collected an entire van full, 300 pounds of food items at the Thanksgiving Pater Puff game by making a non-perishable food item part of the cost of admission. So that was great. Thank you to Mr. Druin for spearheading that collection. And today, there was some pie-throwing that went on at the Dewing School Assembly for those who collected the most donations for a food pantry drive led by Mr. Waldron and some of the PAC volunteers. And I believe it was Mr. Waldron, Mr. Finneren, and Mrs. Bosworth, who were all pied today, the class winners, those who collected the most food items for their wing of the school. So they separated out into wings. And those classes were Ms. Rafi's class, Mrs. Miranda's class, and Ms. Heinz's class. So congratulations to them. And as a school, the Dewing School collected almost 3,500, 3,484 food items for the Tewksbury Community Pantry. So a huge thank you to all who participated, donated, and all those who got pied.
Excellent.
An update for access testing. We are actively preparing for access testing. The Access4L is language proficiency testing. The Access for L's Language Proficiency Testing Window for our EL students opens on January 5th and it closes on February 10th. It's an annual exam that they take. We're planning to begin testing here in Tewksbury on January 9th. Access testing gives our EL students the opportunity to demonstrate their skills in speaking, listening, reading, and writing. And the results of that assessment help us track progress and determine appropriate levels of support and sometimes even allow students to test right out of EL support. We also have an update on preschool for you. So we've been talking a lot about that, Brenda, myself, Dave, Rick Pelletier. We've been collaborating with the building principals and the special education team with the intent to replicate our integrated preschool program at Heathbrook like it is at Dewing, along with options for extended day at both schools. So more information on that will be disseminated after December break. Additionally, we'll be seeking your approval, it's exciting, for some new curriculum resources to support teaching and learning in our preschools. The Big Day for Pre-K, I think it was called, is, is definitely obsolete and we're looking at a really great program for our preschoolers coming in. We'll have that, those new curriculum resources on display at Dewing for parents to view prior to the December break and we will have more information for you all coming in the New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Libby?
Thank you. Some of a quick update on our progress in moving to the center school. We have, might wanna draw your attention to, in the old business section, there's some information there on the center school move. It kinda coincides with some of my report. So the administration wing has moved in officially from various parts of the school system to be reunited again at the, at the new school. We moved the articles on Monday, the 28th, right after the Thanksgiving break, unpacked and have been settling in ever since then. Now we're kinda working on punch list items and getting kinda used to the, the lay of the land there. On the 29th of that same week, library materials were moved from the schools to the, to the library area of the school where our folks have been cataloging and getting items on shelves, taking this extra time during the month of December so that the libraries will be fully up and, and functioning in January when the students come back. Well, not come back, come to the Center Elementary for the first time. We'll have a fully functioning library at that time. That's the hope there. Most of the move materials have been sent to the schools. We've got a report from the schools that they're seeing lots of crates packed already in the hallways. They're moving them from the hallways down into open spaces available at the schools. And the report I got today was, it seems like people are feel like they're in a pretty good place move-wise, packing-wise. Classrooms are starting to look emptied. So making good progress there. Next week, at the Ryan School on the 14th, we're gonna have a trial for the first time of the intended drop-off pattern of the property, which is to circle all cars in a one-way fashion around the whole, around a loop around the whole athletic complex and have all the drop-off, parent drop-off occurring in front, sort of in between the center school and the Ryan School. And then all cars, buses exiting the, the single entrance that's closest to the, to the town center side of the complex. So that was always the plan, was that we would be able to pilot that sorta with just the Ryan folks before the center people came on scene. So we've kinda set that to, to occur for the first time on the 14th next week. We're having a few meetings with our police folks, school staff, maintenance, to make sure we have a, an appropriate plan in place and signage in place, people in place, so that that goes smoothly for everybody on, on those first few days where we're introducing a new, sort of a new method for dropping off and picking up at the Ryan School. And on the, on the old business forum, you can see we have some events planned to allow staff some packing time. Couple have already occurred this week. We had a couple of field trips for grade levels 2, 3, and 4 to, to the high school here to allow staff some time to, to start packing. And we have a couple of trips planned for the 19th, 20th, and 21st, tentatively, if all is, is in readiness for them, to be able to see the school, staff and students be able to see where their classroom's gonna be when they come back from, from December The, and then, of course, over December break, 27th, 28th, 29th would be the bulk of the moving from the North Street, Trahan, and the Heathbrook-Dewing grade 2 folks into the new school. The administration of the school has aggressively planned some tours that same night to allow families a chance to visit the school with their, with their students to see the school before, again, we bring students in in January. And then January 3rd and 4th will be full-day teacher workshop days, allow for unpacking and building orientation, staff to get trained on all the systems in the school and be ready for January 5th when students come back. So that's where we're at right now. Things seem to be moving along pretty much as planned as far as, as far as the building itself goes. And punch list items are getting taken care of and I think we'll be ready.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Sullivan?
Nope. Thank you, Mr. Libby.
Anybody over here?
No, thank you very much.
Sorry. No, please, please.
I have a few. So I'm just gonna get on my list here as I was writing them. So the first one I have is for drop-off pickup situation, I think. And anyone who does drop-off pickup knows people get in line early. I have no idea because I do bus. I love the bus. Take the bus. But for people who get in line early, is there, is there going to be any type of overlap from the center parents who might show up half hour, 45 minutes early and the Ryan parents trying to pick up?
So today, that, that was a very small notice. You're hearing it really for the first time and Principal McGinnis shared a snippet of a video. We will be putting out much more information on that procedure to the Ryan group and then again to the center group with a annotated, if you will, voiceover. We're actually gonna drive through the process with, and we're not sure who's doing all of that yet. Be all seven of us in one car, like a car karaoke, but we are, what we have been doing, and this takes a lot of effort and I really praise just our team, we have gone out and driven every possible scenario that a car could go the wrong way. Where do we need signs? We probably need 50-some-odd one-way signs because you leave a parking lot and if you don't see it right in front of you or a parking, you know, way, you, you might be taking a left again. There have been habits formed. So we need to over, 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 over-communicate every step along the way, what that looks like and feels like, including after, if you're a parent of a Ryan and Center Elementary School, please do not get right back in line. You'll be clogging up the, the thruway. So, and there's two lanes at all times. And then there's the vans and there's the parking lot. So we'll go through all of those little details, but we're building that lane right now as we're getting ready for it. So as I said, Principal McGinnis sent out a little bit. We'll be sending out quite a bit more. And we need the signage there too to help lead the way. Won't all be in place right away, but we're working on as much in place before we do that video so people visually see. We'll be painting more white lines so that people know it's two ways the whole way. There's just so many visuals we need to put in place to keep, keep up with those details. I know that was a long-winded, but it's a, it's a lot. That's really right now our biggest focus area, I'd say, is the safety and security of that whole process.
Yeah, that's great.
We have a cast of thousands meeting tomorrow afternoon at the Ryan dismissal to kind of put as many eyeballs as, and as many perspective as we can.
Awesome.
To kinda come up with, make sure we're not missing anything.
So on the same avenue there, can you verify where the buses for the center school will be dropping off? There's been conflicting comments in the, in the parent chatter and concern that they're getting all dropped off in front of the Ryan and then having to walk over? Or are they being dropped off in front of the center? Can you clarify?
Yes, all buses drop off in the current loop, the Ryan, in front of the Ryan School. And they will be walking over to the Center Elementary. But it will be supervised and, and in both ways, to the school and from the school. It's not gonna be executed the same way the Ryan School arrival and dismissal is run.
Yeah.
Where the bell rings and the Ryan School kids come out, they're older, they can find their own bus. We know that this age group needs to be escorted to their bus.
Yeah. I think, so a concern that'll be there will be inclement weather and making that, that beeline to and from the bus and the building, the littles, the tiny legs, running all the way over there when it's raining, snowing, all those things. So just chatter and something to consider, I guess, when we're figuring out, talking about that and making sure they know.
Yeah.
Okay. The guided tours, are the tours with the families, are those guided or free-for-all?
Okay, and I'd like to talk about that because we are on TV. These tours will be by invite only to the students and their family. This is not gonna be a public open house at this point. We're not ready for that. What we're hoping to do is alleviate the anxiety of the parent and student, when I come to the school, where do I, how do I, it'll be one more opportunity to come in the front door and, and see the major aspects of the school. The classrooms will be closed. Remember, all their stuff will be in tons of bins all over the place. And we will be helping the parents now understand just the lay of the land and some of the big spaces. But again, those details are being developed as we speak right now. And that's pending our permit, our approvals, the weather. So we're crossing our fingers because really, we need the weather to hold out all the way through the 5th, at least the 5th, right? But yeah, there, there'll be more detail on that as well.
Awesome. And then my last comment, I chaperoned one of the field trips today to see the Marionettes here and wanted to just reiterate and thank the PACs for putting all that together. Performances were great. It was awesome to see the kids come together and they were like, we're at this new center school. And they were waving to each other, so it was really, really nice. It's just another little positive on all that today. They were, you know, the North Street kids were waving to the Trahan kids and it was just awesome.
Oh, nice.
Well, thank you for doing that. And again, we invite you, the school committee, on any one of those, they will be guided tours. I don't think I answered that part. They will be guided, there will be some starred areas to see, and we invite you to come and, and be there to see that happen. You're, you're more than welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's okay. Any questions, comments?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, no. Thank you so much, Mr. Libby, for your work on this.
Yeah.
Okay. And moving on to our consent agenda, any comments or concerns on anything in the consent agenda? We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
And second?
Okay, Mr. Russo, seconded by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And no opposed. Motion passes unanimously. And now, school committee member reports. Elementary School Building Committee, Mr. Sullivan?
Yep, Mr. Libby, thanks for the discussion on the new building that you're in. Certainly you know a lot more that's going on there than I do. Just an update to the public, obviously we do have a temporary occupancy permit. That's how Central Office is permitted to be in there. We do not have a final occupancy permit, as Mr. Libby stated. They're still doing punch list stuff. It's still a very active construction area in there. So we are meeting tomorrow night. Excited to hear what the latest update is and I'm glad to hear Mr. Libby say that we seem to be still on time and on budget, so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from anyone? Okay. And the CPAC, Mr. Parsons and Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Yeah. So, no update. The CPAC will be meeting January 19th.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Russo, wellness?
Yeah, we just actually met today. So, couple things, just in terms of next up. So we do have a wellness policy, which we have been looking at and looking at other districts' wellness policy really, to really come up with a comprehensive policy. We actually got guidance from DESI a little bit on this as well. And have been working with someone specifically from DESI on, again, just making sure that we're taking credit for all the things that we're doing. We're actually doing the things that our policy states and that it does cover all aspects. So we actually have a draft policy now that we are reviewing. It's, it's complete in that sense that we have something to actually tangible to review. And then we'll be putting that, you know, as a recommendation for the Policy Committee and eventually Superintendent Regan as well. So that was, you know, moved forward today. A couple other things, they are, we are working on, Deb Mugford is working with some of the nutrition folks on putting in a fun and entertaining way to talk about nutrition in the elementary schools, probably tying that into Nutrition Month in the month of March. And then a couple other just sort of side notes with just little things that we're talking about in terms of wellness around vaping, specifically more the middle school, high school areas, of course. You know, so we're, we're gonna be talking to some of the health educators specifically in the district about some ways that we can continue to educate folks on that. And then the other, last piece is just on options in the lunchroom, specifically here at the high school, in terms of, you know, just options available to students from a, from a nutrition standpoint and just having some of those options available. So that's all we got. We are meeting again next, March 1st will be our next meeting.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, the CPAC meeting on January 19th is actually their basic rights workshop, not their regular business meeting.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay. And then, Mr. Sullivan, I'll have you just take over here with policy.
As I stated earlier, we have not met in November, so there's no actual new policies being presented tonight. We're certainly hoping once we get into that new school, we can dive back into that work, Madam Chair, with our district administration, certainly our hope. But for the purpose of this evening, we have policies reviewed and adopted with no changes. We have none of those. We have no policies for consideration for revisions that were basically just change of dates on informational reading, none of those. We do have policies for consideration that we discussed at our October 18th meeting. And these are consideration for revision on a first reading only. It's still subject to a second, final, and a vote. And those are EB Safety Program, EBB First Aid, EBC Emergency Plans, EBCD Emergency Closings, EC Buildings and Grounds Management, ECA Buildings and Grounds Security, ECAC Vandalism, EDC Authorized Use of School-Owned Materials, EEA Student Transportation Services, EEAA Walkers and Riders, EEAE School Bus Safety Program, EEAEB Drug and Alcohol Testing for School Bus and Commercial Vehicle Drivers, EEAG Student Transportation in Private Vehicles, and EEAJ Motor Vehicles Idling on School Grounds.
Any questions or comments on policies for consideration for revision on first reading?
Just one, Madam Chair. So I didn't see, I tried to look elsewhere just to see if maybe we were covering it someplace else, but I, nothing was at my fingertips. On the first aid policy, I know for the On the first aid policy, I know for the district, we require those accident illness forms for all families to be filled out typically at the beginning of the school year, and then I think the nurses typically will follow up if not received. Is there anything that we should be taking credit for referencing as it relates to that, potentially, and again, just something maybe for the committee to consider, and again, I'm not sure, maybe if we're covering it someplace else, maybe as well?
So we did share this policy with the, our health director.
Okay.
Kelly Constantino, and that was not some feedback that she had?
Okay.
Do you have any comments?
I think that might more fall under an exhibit of procedure, which we try not to.
Okay.
Put in here.
Okay.
Only because that fluctuates.
Yeah.
And it makes it a little bit tedious, so I would say that that would fall under the procedural part.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Is that something that we have in the handbook, that the district has in the handbook?
Yes, the link to that form and that process is in there.
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
And then next is the policies for consideration for revision on second and final reading and a vote. BDG School Attorney, CA Administration Goals, CB School Superintendent, CBD Superintendent's Contract, CBI Evaluation of the Superintendent, CCB Line and Staff Relations, CHA Development of Procedures, CHCA Approval of Handbooks and Directives, and CHD Administration and Policy Absence.
Questions or comments? This is, the second and final reading is up for voting tonight, so any comments? Okay, is there a motion?
I saw a motion.
Okay, so Mr. Parsons has motioned.
I'll second.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith has seconded to approve the policies for consideration for revision on second and final reading, BDG, CA, CB, CBD, CBI, CCB, CHA, CHCA, CHD. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And no opposed, so that motion passes unanimously. Okay, and now for some old business, we have some Center Elementary School move update.
Madam Chair, I think, I think Mr. Libby did a great job outlining this. I just would add one thing, parents and staff can expect to see this notice with the FAQs on the back, which was a suggestion at the last meeting that we included, and those FAQs may grow by the time we put this in the district newsletter next week. And as I said, there'll be multiple communications of this process as we go, so I do ask that parents stay informed with the communications that we'll be sending out. I know it's the time of the year where people are very busy, but lots of detail will be coming their way.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, and the Center Elementary School naming considerations of key areas.
Okay, Madam Chair, this came up to revisit at our last committee meeting, and what you have in front of you does require a vote for the consideration of the school committee to name key areas in the Center Elementary School. And as you can see in the table, the considerations are commemorating the Trahan School by naming the Library Media Center, the Trahan Library Media Center. And then another choice and vote would be commemorating another key area after the North Street. Two suggestions are, one, either the North Street Gym or perhaps the corridor that the gym and the library are on, calling it the North Street Main Corridor, or North Street.
Okay, so why don't we start with the Louise Davy Trahan? Any conversation, opening it up to comments?
I think it's important that we remember the history of these buildings, that, to be fair, we don't know what's going to happen to those buildings just yet, you know? We know that they're not going to be in the school purview anymore, we know, but at some point, those buildings may be just completely taken down and removed at some point in terms of, you know, from the reuse side of things, like what would you use those buildings for at that point? So I think it's important to commemorate and recall that history, and in fact, I think, you know, a few of us on the committee have had several parents at times reach out to say, hey, what is going, you know, is there a way to remember Louise Davy Trahan, et cetera? And so I think this is a great way to honor that memory.
Okay, any other conversation?
I agree with my colleague, but is it the Trahan Library, we're adding, are we adding Louise, are we, I'm just trying to, as a point of interest, we have on the sheet here the Trahan Library Media Center. You mentioned on Louise.
Well, that's the current, that's the current name of the Trahan now, so.
But are these, is this what?
I think it's, I think it's really.
The school's looking for?
Yeah, you can certainly decide to add Louise Davy Trahan Library Media Center, and, you know, how we commemorate that on a plaque may obviously largely say Trahan Library Media Center with no note of who Trahan is, Louise Davy Trahan. So I think we can always look at how the plaque reads, because, for instance, like we did here, the, you know, Christine L. McGrath Performing Arts Center, where most people will call it the McGrath Auditorium. So if you decide that you're naming it the library after Louise Davy Trahan, you can decide tonight as a group, do we want to include the full name or just the word Trahan? I think the key here is the sentiment that that place in the school would be, carry on the name of the school.
My personal thought is, given the fact that she was an educator in the district, that the library is a very appropriate place for her, for us to, you know, put some commemoration. So these were recommendations, I believe, that had come from the Elementary School Building Committee. So, I mean, I personally am comfortable with the Trahan Media Center.
I agree. Are you, so are you looking for a motion on these individually or separately?
Just one motion and then a second, then we can.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to move forward with the Trahan Library Media Center to name the library at the new Center Elementary School.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
So I just want to, I just want to clarify one point, because, again, we have a, from a consistency standpoint, again, to Ms. Regan's point, we have the Christine McGrath Auditorium, Performing Arts Center, so should we be keeping that same consistency? Again, we can, to your point, we refer to it as.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor, so.
Correct.
Are you asking for that to be withdrawn so we can continue discussion?
Well, I mean, there's a first and a second, so from a point of order standpoint, I think there's a discussion that should happen once that motion is made.
The point of order would be the motion, the second, and then you go to the vote, or you can ask to have that withdrawn, so we can.
Well, I'm simply just saying from a.
Back to discussion.
Can I ask to withdraw it back to discussion?
Yes.
Sure. How about this, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
Have the original motion withdrawn, pending a second, so we can have further discussion on the Trahan Library Media Center.
Okay, so a motion to withdraw?
I just want to say, you know, we have multiple ways this can be achieved, too. Remember that we have a history, we have, we have that ability to educate our students as to who was Louise Davy Trahan, if I'm using all the right initials.
Yeah.
Through our Library Media Center.
Yeah.
So we, so if it's called the Trahan Library, I mean, let me tell you, right now, a lot of people still wouldn't say, I don't know, who is that?
Right.
We can address that through our Library Media Center curriculum. We can address it through research, who was, just like we will the history wall. You know, there's this just limited amount of text you put on that, and then that's an opportunity for education. So I think either way, you're commemorating who it was, it's whether all of it's on the plaque or some of it's through learning about her through the education. Both ways, there's no right or wrong here, and certainly, it's up to you, but I would tell you that we would make an effort to make sure the kiddos know, and there's opportunity to research that or see that within the library curriculum, who was this person?
Yeah, and I had no concern really about that, because I think we do a great job with that. Like I said, it was more just from a consistency standpoint, more than anything. That's all.
And to add, if we formally named the library the Louis Davy Trahan Library Media Center, locally, I'm sure we would just call it the Trahan.
Mm-hmm.
So in a way, you would be honoring both, whereas if we just call it the Trahan, you might lose the context of the person. But full name, you get both. It's a little less plaque space. That's just my opinion.
Any additional discussion?
My only comment is, is, and I know there's, looking at all these policies, there's a movement away from the names. Are we commemorating the school? Are we commemorating the name? I certainly appreciate your sentiment, Mr. Russo, but a lot of these are the, you know, emotional decisions of the time of the day, or sometimes even worse, people that hold a political seat. I'm not saying that happened in this case.
Mm-hmm.
I'm certainly hope, and I'm sure someone might infer that anyways because they'll want to, but it's not why I'm saying it, but that's my only concern about a whole name, because then, when the next really bad happens, bad thing happens and someone comes in here and says, well, I want to make sure that we're consistent in how come, you know, my aunt or my mother or my son, God forbid, or my daughter, why don't you do this? So that's, that's my only concern, where I would personally, where it is the Trahan Library Media Center, and then maybe do something more specific for people.
Yeah.
We can kind of be more consistent in what our policy is directing us to try to.
Sure.
Stay away from having memorials in the schools, right? The schools are supposed to be learning environments, you know? So that's my only concern with the whole name, me personally, you know?
And just to clarify, when I made the motion, it was under the impression that we would go with the Trahan Library Media Center with significant recognition of the history of the name.
Yeah.
That got it to where it is at that point, not necessarily needing to put it all on the forefront.
I, that's kind of where my head is at as well. I agree with you, because I think it was confusing, even at the Louise Davy Trahan School, to not have any sort of indication in the school for who was she. And I think, you know, being from Tewksbury, it was a, I understood and had, I knew a little bit of the background, but I think a lot of families didn't, and so it's confusing. So I, I hope that regardless of whatever we choose for the name, there is some sort of acknowledgement so that historically, people will be able to look at a little sign, you know, maybe a photo, however you want to do this, so that there's some reference.
Right.
To who she is. But in terms of the name, I'm, I'm okay with the Trahan Media Center.
Okay, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to move forward with the Trahan Library Media Center with acknowledgement of the lineage of that name somewhere within the, the library, moving forward.
Okay. I'll second. And a second by Mr. Parsons. And so how do you vote, Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, for unanimous vote of five to zero for the Trahan Media, Library Media Center. And moving on to the North Street name, any conversation?
I have some.
Yes.
I'm just going to ask, may Mrs. Regan or Mr. Libby, how many main corridors do we have in that building?
And that's the problem with main corridor. So we thought, and honestly, the idea here was naming a corridor, North Street, right? There is no real main corridor, and it really takes a bend. So what evolved out of this is, you could name the, you know, gymnasium, North Street Gymnasium, you could name the corridor that goes by the Trahan Library down to the North Street Gym, you could name that North Street. So this is really a choice, you know? It's less emotional, other than so many people loved their North Street School, but it's not tied to a person. So I think it really is up to you. The idea is using North Street, whether it's the room or that lane, if you will, that gets you to.
True. Well, the reason I ask is not to.
Yeah.
Any kind of trickery, does it, it's a practical matter for me. Does it help our kids, remember, two, three, and four?
Yeah.
Go down North Street, your class is off North Street, you know what I mean?
Yeah, then we'd have to have North Street Level One, North Street Level Two, Level Three, so I think focusing it to that area is helpful for those little kids.
I have a question, too. So if we don't move forward with the North Street Gym, do we then still have to name the gym? And is it a gym cafeteria? Is that the?
No, we don't.
You don't have.
Yeah, just a way, I think, to commemorate the history of the school.
I think what come up in the building, and I was late to the party, was just commemorating those schools, the North Street School and the Trahan School, somewhere in, in the new Center Elementary School. And I think we did that partly with the Center School that we took down, which I think Mrs. Regan went high school there. Isn't that right, Mrs. Regan?
Yes. No, I did not. I did look at it, though.
Wasn't that the first high school?
It was the first high school, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I thought I had that right.
A long time ago. My daughter did dance there, but no. I think, you know, we opened this high school and the auditorium, the Performing Arts Center was named, but the gymnasium wasn't named until much later, when, when an idea, you know, evolved. So we don't have to name all the spaces. As Mr. Sullivan said, this was an opportunity to really commemorate those two schools that will no longer be used as schools that have been beloved by many, many people for many, many years. Wherever that shall be, I think those are two good choices that get lots of recognition, and that's where, why that, I think, was proposed through the building committee.
I'm in favor of the North Street Main Corridor. I'm just imagining parents dropping off their kids at Sunday basketball and typing in the North Street Gym and ending up up the road. The North Street Gym at the Center Elementary School.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And just to, just to clarify, that, that North Street Main Corridor, I'm just trying to visualize it in my head, so that, that's the actual hallway going to the Library Media Center, right? It's not going to the gym.
The whole, that whole hallway that is, it would be called North Street.
Right.
And it, you would say, take North Street, you've got to go down North Street.
But that's going to the Library Media Center, not to the gym.
Well, it's really one hallway.
It does connect, okay. It's been a while since.
You haven't told the second before.
You can do the whole, you'd probably have little street signs out, right? It'd be cute, North Street.
Yeah, 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 okay.
I'm a fan of the North Street Corridor versus the gym.
Same here. Same here, as well.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to name and commemorate the North Street School by naming the North Street Main Corridor, the corridor leading up to the Library Media Center.
May I suggest we eliminate the word "main" and just say North Street Corridor?
Yeah, 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 that's, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, yes.
Mr. Russo, can I, can I offer this before we have a second? Mrs. Regan? Can, we maybe offer that in the motion, that we will name a corridor, the North Street Corridor, and then when we get in there and we get some input from building, and we get some input from the people, students and staff that are there, then choose what they, we think is the best functioning where North Street should be, as opposed to us trying to figure out here, not in the building, not looking at the floor plan, but at least acknowledging, yes, we're going to name a corridor, seems like we seem to be in agreement, North Street Corridor, but I would just prefer to leave it open, subject to.
Yeah.
Being able to get in there and see where it seems to be the most.
Makes sense.
That's fair. Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Okay. You want to make that, do you want me to, well, we should rescind that motion then.
You can make the motion.
I'll make that, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Amend your motion.
Oh, okay, then we'll just amend it. Whoa. So let's, we will, I will make a motion to commemorate a part of the Center School, a particular corridor that will be determined at a later date, the North Street Corridor.
Yep, and I'll second.
Okay.
And Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, so that's five to zero. Motion passes.
And, Madam Chair, on that note, we are meeting at six. If anyone would like to join us at five, we are walking through that building for one last final time. I'll be honest with you, I don't care if they get upset, if you guys all show up.
No.
I'll make sure you'll get in, but.
Is it December 8th?
Tomorrow.
No, tomorrow night, tomorrow night.
Okay.
So if you guys want to walk through.
It's 5:00 PM?
Try to let me know, 5:00, yeah. We have our meeting at six, we're going to walk through at 5:00, because I think we have, there's also a plaque dedication that the building committee's looking through that wants to get some ideas where that will go as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we will get back to you if we're interested.
Right. Right. Thank you.
And then for new business, Mr. Libby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we had been discussing a method to keep the committee kind of updated on our, where we are tracking on our budget. And we came up with this as a potential solution where we would summarize our budget and our expenditures just at the cost center level. The cost center level being our school buildings or our major departments. It's sort of how we formulate the budget when we go through the budget process rather than getting into the, you know, the line item detail that we do produce. And this all rolls into this sheet that is in your packet. So these totals that's represented in the spreadsheet in your packet come from the many accounts that we have at each different school, at each, in each different department. So we plan on adding this to the committee agenda on a quarterly basis, kind of showing folks where we are as we track through the year in our budget. Just to kind of let you know where we're at from an accounting perspective, we do encumber all of our salary for all of our employees, and we encumber most of our major monthly known expenses, things like utilities, transportation, tuition, any maintenance contracts we have with plumbers, roofers, electricians. We put purchase orders in to kind of set that money aside and say, you know, we pretty much know we're going to spend X. And then the unknown amount is that sort of, that remaining amount that we have shown at the bottom of the sheet, the 3,006,000 or so left. Or it shows that we've spent 93% of our budget. We haven't really spent 93% of our budget. We've committed 93% of our budget. We have some, you know, unknown expenses, you know, payroll expenses that come in through people working extra, either overtime or hourly, you know, helping students with other needs in the classroom, special needs services, anything like that that we get on a weekly or bi-weekly basis from people, that we don't know what those numbers are, that we can encumber. Those would be coming out of that 3.6 million we have left. So in a typical year, at this point in the year, having, we are usually between 5% and 7% left. This is pretty normal for where we are. So looking down at a, from each level, things that might draw questions. The third cost center down, the Center School, we have expenses against the Center School. We haven't even opened the Center School. How can we have expenses against the Center School? Well, we encumbered everyone's salary that's moving to the Center School, a percentage of their salary at the beginning of the year because we knew folks were moving from the Trahan, from the North Street, and all the grade two people. We encumbered a percentage of their salary, and we've allocated it to the Center School rather than flipping them to a different account mid-year. We just said at the beginning of the year, okay, you're going to spend 46% of your year in school X and 54% of your school, of your school year in the Center School. So that's sort of why we already have some expenses there, even though the school's not open. Down in '84, cost center for a school committee under transfers and adjustments, that's the only place we have a transfer at this point. We got extra money at October Town Meeting based on the outstanding raise you folks received during the vote at Town Meeting. And so that's represented by that $1,550. We got a Town Meeting that increased our budget to cover that warrant article. Oh, transportation is showing us a negative currently. We've had some specialized transportation services that we've... A vendor that we typically used in the past has gotten out of the business of providing those services that we needed for our students. We had found another vendor that was significantly more expensive. Just, it's the nature of transportation services these days. The labor market's bad. All the transportation costs are increasing pretty significantly. We continue to look for other ways to be able to provide that transportation, those transportation services. And if we can, we, meeting and calling pretty much weekly to other vendors to try to find another options. But that's where we would be at if we don't find other options for some of those services. And anything else that might draw a question? I think that was it. At the end of the day, though, the school department, as part of the town entity, we're a bottom-line budget. We just have to make sure we don't go over our $53 million budget mark. If we're over in one cost center, under in another, at the end of the day, that's not, not a huge deal. You know, we can adjust things accordingly. But the number we can't click over is that, that $53 million total figure for us at the end of the year. So that's what we really keep our eye on when we get close to June and close to the end of our fiscal year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any comments? Mr. Russo?
Yeah. So, Mr. Libby, so first of all, thank you. This is exactly what I think from my standpoint, and I want to speak certainly for my colleagues. I think the level that this committee, I think, should be looking at this, which is great. Just a couple small questions. So when you say expended, are we saying that this is expended, actually paid out in cash, or are these just things that are accrued through November? I'm assuming November 30th maybe at this point?
This is expended through, when did I run this? Through, yeah, the payroll of November 10th
Okay.
and probably the vendor warrant
Yeah.
that you guys signed like last week.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. And then as far as the capital outlay goes, so, I mean, I feel like, you know, any sort of town-wide budget, I mean, it's sort of a use it or lose it type thing. Obviously, I know that when we looked at the budget, or I guess before I was on the committee, there was a whole plan of, okay, hey, we think we're going to spend about this. These are the projects. Obviously, we've got to sort of wait and see. I'm assuming maybe some of those things maybe are in motion, or...
Yeah. We have a roofing, roofing coating project at the Wynn School that was delayed. We expected we were going to get it done before the bad weather in the winter. We wanted to do it this spring, I mean, this fall. It got delayed to a... What happened? I can't really remember why, but I expected that would be spent by now. But the contract is about $420,000 for that project. So that's, although it's not in here as encumbered, it's encumbered up here.
Yeah, yeah, I got you. I got you.
Yeah, I know, that's a coming attraction, and that's going to hit that capital outlay account very shortly. Yeah, they did some patchwork to get us through the winter.
Yeah.
And then they're going to hit the whole coating project because it became too cold.
Yeah. And again, it was more importantly, from my standpoint, just understanding, are we set to still use those dollars this fiscal year?
Yes. A portion of that was, so a big chunk was the roof. And then we typically use some capital for our technology expenditures, which we'll see where we're at with this, with the new one-to-one initiative.
Yeah.
I'll have to talk with Mr. Stamp to see where he's at with inventory for outfitting folks for next year.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Parsons, anything from you?
I love this practice. Very easily digestible. Much more convenient than going through every line item. So thank you for this. A lot of things make sense looking at it. Thank you.
Okay.
No questions? Okay. Mr. Sullivan?
Nope. Thank you, Ms. Libby.
And I have no questions either. I just, I really appreciate you putting the time in to do this and especially knowing that you're kind of getting ready for the next budget season. So you have a lot going on. Thank you. And next, we have school committee matters of interest. Maybe you have anything to add, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, just a shout out to our girls volleyball student athletes that were state champs this year. You know, hopefully, we can get them in next meeting. And I hope everyone has a wonderful, very wonderful Christmas and holiday season if you don't happen to celebrate Christmas, and a Happy New Year. And good luck to all our new students that are going to be moving into that beautiful, state-of-the-art building at the first of the year. I know there's probably going to be some anxiety for both students and families and staff. And, you know, I'm looking forward, I hope to be there on day one, Mrs. Regan.
Thank you. We'll use you.
See the smiling faces and feel free to put me to work, you know. It's been a long project, and I think it's really going to be a great thing, not only for our students but for our community, so.
Thank you. Well, all hands on deck, anyone willing and available. We'll use you for sure. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Parsons?
Nothing new. Just for every student and staff there, two weeks and two days. You know, enjoy your holidays.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Russo?
Mr. Sullivan actually took all the words out of my mouth with all of that, so I am going to leave it at that.
That's a first.
Ms. Bea Johnnie Smith?
So I just want to call out, the PACs are hosting many fun winter events over the next few weeks. And then I also want to congratulate our new Center Elementary School PAC. Had their meeting the other night and voted in their new board members and formed their new doing PAC, Heathbrook PAC, and Center PAC. So congratulations to all of them. I attended as a parent, and there was a ton of people there. So it was really great to see so many parents excited, and I hope to continue to see them there.
Nice.
That's awesome.
Okay. And I just want to ask if you wanted to update the committee on the reuse committee?
Sure. So last night, the reuse committee met with the select board to present our recommendation as a committee as to what we thought and hope that the select board takes into consideration when using the Trahan and the North Street in the future. The full presentation is available online and can be reviewed. We mentioned that some of the highlights are the survey that the committee put out that nearly 800 residents filled out and completed and provided their feedback on what they wanted and what they really didn't want. The residents really were hoping to see those spaces be used. A lot of people keep saying "open space," but "open space" isn't necessarily what they mean. They mean parks, and they mean usable space for the community to gather. We did make the recommendation that the North Street potentially be used in the future for a lower elementary school if on the plan of the administration at some point, with the caveat that that is a long-term project. And in the meantime, the hope is to use that North Street space and connect to the Frasca Fields using some conservation, preservation funds to do so. But it was a nice meeting. The committee disbanded at that time, so that committee is no longer active. But it was a really neat opportunity to be on there as a resident at large and then take on as the school committee representative.
Thank you for your work.
You're welcome. That was great.
Having worked on it early on, I know it was a lot of work. So thank you. And I have no matters of interest, just, you know, good luck to all of you moving into the new space.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we're here to support any way we can, so. And future dates, we have January 11th, 2023, the Budget Workshop and Regular Meeting. February 8th, the Budget Public Hearing. March 8th is also a Budget Public Hearing. And then for subcommittee upcoming dates, as we heard, the Elementary School Building Committee will be meeting on December 8th. The CPAC Business Meeting, this says Business Meeting, January 19th, it's not.
Basic Rights.
Basic Rights, thank you. And Wellness Advisory Committee, March 1st, and the Policy Subcommittee to be determined, but hopefully before the end of February. Future agenda items, I have one to add. I would like to add the Superintendent Midyear Review to the agenda for January, if possible. And does anybody have anything else?
No, not at this time.
No? Okay. Anything from all of you? Okay. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Russo?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan to adjourn at 8:16 p.m. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And no opposed. So we are adjourned. Thank you.